All right. Good evening. I would like to call the Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board Meeting to Order. Time is 7:00 PM. First, in honor of the day, 23 years later, just do a brief moment of silence to remember and honor those lost on September 11th and the terrorist attacks and the ensuing war on terror and all the brave men and women that have fought for our country and close at home. So, brief moment of silence for that. Okay, thank you. And this is around the table attendance for the minute taker, Jacob Schultzberg here.
Meg Schlesman here.
Aaron Solkret here.
Mike DeRose here.
Jake Anadie here.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Switzer here.
And absent Mr. Preston, he did let us know he will not be here, as well as Mr. Marks. That is it. A and Rs, we have Lot 3.1 for Southeast Main Street, possible votes. Mr. Benoit.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed this A and R. This seems to be compatible with our subdivision rules and regulations. This is to create, this is to carve off Lot 4 into two lots to create Lot 3.1. I've shown on the plan, there's two pages here. There's the close-up on the second page showing the line to be abandoned that separates parcel A from parcel B, parcel A and B to be combined into Lot 1, Lot 3.1.
Okay. And everything's on the plan that we need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is that one A and R or two of them? There's a Southeast Main and a Southwest Main.
Uh, the, we're doing Southeast first, but there is a second one, another application for Southwest.
Okay.
Board, any other questions or comments? Seeing as none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R for 3.1 Southeast Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Schlesman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. And second for 55 Southwest Main Street, possible votes.
Yep. A and R here. This one is to, this one doesn't affect road frontage. This one is to transfer a piece of land from one landowner to the next. This is from Lot 3R. Parcel A is going to Lot 1R to be combined from the line to be removed from the middle. The plan meets all the requirements of the vision control. I recommend endorsement.
Okay. Board, any questions or comments?
Sorry, for the chair. So there's, they're combining these two lots with two separate houses on them?
Combining parcel A with Lot 1R. The two structures, one is a house, one's a park.
Okay. So, parcel, sorry. 1R?
Yeah, I know. Well, back here.
Yep.
Yep.
Ah, got it.
Yep.
Got it.
Just making it bigger lot.
With Lot 1R.
Yep.
But parcel A, you're saying, right? Yep.
Oh. You need a motion to endorse?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to endorse if there's no other comments or questions.
Yep, make a motion to endorse the A and R for 55 Southwest Main Street.
A second. Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And those will be ready to be signed at the end of the meeting. Okay. Public hearing, 7:00 PM, Town of Douglas Highway. Application for scenic road permit 2024-31. I will, it's a quick public hearing notice, I'll read it. In accordance with National Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), in the Town of Douglas Scenic Road Bylaw, the Town, the Douglas Plan and Board and the Tree Warden are holding a public hearing on the application of the Town of Douglas for a special permit to remove two dead trees along 9 Oak Street. The scenic road is Oak Street, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing will be held Wednesday, September 20, uh, September 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Public hearing is now open, and we have Mr. Ferno here to present what is going on.
I received notice on this, but I'm like a three-quarters of a mile down the street, so I'm just gonna stay here.
Okay. You're not abstaining, you're, you're...
I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Ferno.
Thank you. I'm Adam Ferno, Highway Superintendent, Tree Warden. The resident at 9 Oak Street approached me about some dead trees along the frontage, uh, the front of his residence. Um, I went to the site, met with the gentleman, and after measuring out the right-of-way, I believe two of the trees are in the town's right-of-way. Um, so since we, you know, being a scenic road, we're having this hearing tonight, um, one tree is dropping large branches, the other one is rotted in the middle. It has, you know, both are actually showing the green, but you can tell they're both, they're both dying or dead. Um, it's just an ongoing issue we've been going through with a lot of the trees in the town. We spend, we spend about $60,000 a year taking trees down. This being a scenic road needs a hearing. So I've come forth, uh, the other, there's probably six trees that are dead. Um, the other four, the gentleman could take down, they're out of the right-of-way, so it's not on town property. But these two, I feel that they are, so just to be safe, I'd rather have the hearing, and then we'll have them removed.
Okay. Mr. Benoit, any follow-up on that?
No concern.
Okay. Board, any questions, comments, concerns?
Mike DeRose, uh, this is the two trees identified in red in the middle?
Correct, yep, one on each side of the driveway.
One on each side of the driveway?
Yeah, the other, the other trees all along the front, they're also dead, but I think they're like a foot back, so we're just on the outside of the right-of-way. So I, I feel they're not in the town's right-of-way.
Yep.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online with questions or comments regarding the tree removal on the scenic road for Oak Street?
The only thing I'd like to say, I'm the homeowner.
Okay. Could you just come up to the microphones? Could approach you and just name and address, please, sir?
My name's Jason McCollum.
Hey, Jason, how are you?
9 Oak Street. Uh, the other four trees in question, I'm taking down.
Okay.
They're, they're dead, they're dropping large branches, and I want to, matter of safety.
Okay. All right.
That's all I got to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing as none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Solkret, second by Ms. Schlesman. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to stay.
Okay. Uh, unanimous, besides one abstention for Mr. Zwicker, uh, public hearing is now closed, and... What's that? Anyone care to make a motion to approve? Uh, what language do we need, Mr. Benoit? Just to approve the application?
Approve the application for scenic road for our town.
Okay. Anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve.
Okay.
Remove a little trees.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Schlesman, second by Mr. Solkret. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, unanimous, except for Mr. Zwicker with an abstention. Okay, that is all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And under additional business, um, we are gonna discuss, um, possible scenic road amendments, but we'll just... We'll wait to do that. Okay. Um, we have a couple accessory apartment extensions, um, under additional business. Have one for 503 Northwest Main Street and 141 Northwest Main Street, possible votes. Mr. Benoit.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that we, um, have the application for 503 Northwest Main, but we don't have the right application to attach the packet. However, I have reviewed this. This is a, a blood relative that's continuing to occupy the site, and there's no changes to the accessory apartment. That's for 503 Northwest Main. 141 Northwest Main, see, occupancy owner's mother, still the same. It's not, no changes to the accessory apartment. I recommend granting both extensions a motion if you'd like to.
I assume it's 295 Walmeyer coming up maybe next meeting, then?
I think we did that one.
Okay. All right. So, uh, the two accessory apartment extensions, no changes.
I have one question.
Mrs. Zwicker?
How is the new state law coming down gonna affect all this?
We're gonna have...
Is this something where we should hold off on until it's in effect? Or we continue? When, when did this all happen?
Maintain status quo till February 1st.
Till February 1st is what it is?
Yep.
Then February 1st, it's all gonna change?
Yeah, we're hoping to have a bylaw on the floor for the full town meeting. One for this board to review in advance.
That's something that'll become on form?
Yep. Very soon.
Okay.
Something we got hit with quickly.
Yeah. No, no, just, I'm just asking about, that's why, I'm just asking.
Yep.
Okay.
Board, any other questions or comments? All right. Uh, we'll do them together. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, endorse, accept the accessory apartment extension for 503 Northwest Main Street and the extension for 141 Northwest Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Zwicker, second by Mr. Solkret. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All set.
All right. Uh, Perry Street Extension, Mr. Benoit, they will not, no updates from that? They're not gonna be coming in to talk?
They've asked us to table this to the first meeting in October.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Preston's not here for master plan. Do you have any updates for master plan?
I've got a couple members here, like to provide updates, but, uh, the master plan committee's working on their survey. They almost finalized kind of the details of it at their last meeting. They have a meeting again tomorrow, hopefully to wrap up that survey. The website is now operational. Had some kinks I had to work out, but it's, it's good to go now.
For the, those listening, what is the website?
The master plan website, it's under the Community Development page.
Okay.
On the town website. And there's a dedicated page on the web for master plan.
I think that the Facebook's open, right?
Um, I, I'm not aware of that. I don't run the most.
Don't we try to log into that last meeting?
I, I...
Or they were working on it?
I, I, I don't know who runs that. That's privately run. Whoever does it, it's not run by the town.
All right. So meeting tomorrow for that?
Yep.
This, we, we still have a couple minutes to pass along, so, uh, yeah, general bylaw, um, scenic road amendments?
This could take a little while.
You think so?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can give an update on Business Park at Legacy Circle.
Yes. Do we have anything else?
Yep. So, received an email from Evan Tatro yesterday. I'll, I'll just read it for you to the record. I know you've been informed that we have been in discussion with a few tree companies and intend to plant the trees. Our expectation was to shoot for the end of summer to give trees the best chance at survival. While one of the quotes we received was cost prohibitive, we're finalizing details with a vendor that we expect will be able to accommodate the need. We're planting the 30 trees at the edge of the vegetative buffer to bolster the existing. I did ask him to come to the meeting, but I asked him on Monday. So he said there wasn't enough time for them to be able to come. Resisting commitments, they cannot attend. We'll be happy to attend the following meeting and provide details on our agreement with the tree company that will be planted.
Thank you.
If I, to the chair, if I may, I drove by there today. Okay. I didn't drive there on purpose, I was going to equipment. Anyway, um, nothing has changed. So, part of this equation isn't just the buffer, which is what we've been waiting for for months and months and months, and, oh, sure, it probably shouldn't have been taken down in the first place, sort of. It's on our back now that we have to enforce something to be planted there. But his equipment, his sales mats and cribbing and everything is up near the property line in the area that the planting would be done.
It looks like it's right on the edge.
Right on the edge.
I think the plantings would fit that, and on the inside of that.
Right, but he needs to pull back that equipment, and we've asked that, all that material, because it is right there.
It is, but...
It's where, but it's where he's gonna plant the 30, whatever he's gonna plant.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I mean, I know the, the MO businesses, get your product out in the street, try to make sales, be in the vision of the public, and it's not what the intention was with the vegetative border, you know? Um, I, I just think that at least that doesn't cost him a penny to move it back where it should be, so that when the time is to plant, right now, there's no room to plant anything.
Yeah.
He needs to move it back. And that doesn't, it's like sweeping into front of your sidewalk, you can do it, doesn't cost anything. He just needs to move that back right now, and then we'll see him in two weeks, but we're getting no movement over there. That's all.
Right. But we have to, if, if it's within the site plan where the stuff is, we'd be tough to have him move it, that's why...
Yes. But it's right where the buffer came down. It's exactly right up against the trees that are left.
Yeah.
Am I, am I wrong?
I think there's enough space in between for the arbor buddies to go, but that would provide a lot of shading for them. I understand that. Might not help them grow. They should move them back to allow them to grow a little bit. I agree. But it's within their prerogative.
Yeah. They need to follow the site plan and also the modification that we...
Yep.
...made. Do we want to give them a deadline to make the, put the trees in before a possible season to assist?
They said that they'll share the details of their agreement with the tree company at our next meeting.
Two weeks.
Can anticipate that at the next meeting.
And what was the third part, if I may, of the thread? It said, "What is your concern?" What was that part? I have it on the, uh, you sent out the thread of the emails. I don't understand that last part. It was the third one.
It's two paragraphs.
Maybe it was before. It was a part of the thread, so, so it wasn't...
He asked, I'm not really sure what your, what your question is, I mean...
So, there were three emails in that, back and forth...
Mm-hmm.
...that you sent.
Yep.
And there was one at the end of that.
That was the first one, where he asked the first question.
The first question is, "What are your concerns?"
Yeah.
Is that what that was?
And then I responded in blue, or, and that was my...
Okay, so that was...
We just went through the whole timeline of what we asked for.
I know, I'm trying to find, you know, the time, the dates, and looking at the time of the day that these things were written.
Yeah, he sent it on Tuesday, September 10th. I responded, uh, he sent it at 3:26, I responded at 3:45 same day.
Okay.
Just went through the whole timeline of what, when this first happened. We sent them an email on March 28th. Dale Bangma came in April 10th with a modification, and we haven't seen anything happen since. After we approved it, so...
Okay. When was the first, when was the date of the decision?
April 10th.
All right. We've been there just for a bit. Okay, everybody, whatever you all want to do, I don't, just stating that movement could have happened. We'll see what happens in two weeks.
Yep.
Is there a rest of the board? Okay. Um, just make sure they know ahead of time, anticipate to come in and...
Just so the board knows, through the chair. We've been down this road before. Where it gets pushed off, gets pushed off, gets pushed off.
If anyone would like to make a motion or an argument, if, if anything now, I, I will definitely...
In two weeks, we'll see what happens in two weeks.
Yeah, okay. All right. Two weeks, Mr. Benoit. All right. Um, time is 7:18. We will, uh, do the public hearing continued for McIntyre Loom Incorporated. Application for special permit, SP-240416. Earth removal permit, ER-240416. Site plan review, SPR-24, 240416. Outdoor manufacturing and possible votes, um, off of Legacy Circle. Gentlemen?
Good morning.
Thomas McIntyre, um, the applicant.
John, I'm the president of McIntyre Loom.
Good evening. Mike Dryden, Senior Project Manager with Allen Engineering, Civil Engineer. And joining us via Zoom is the sound consultant for the applicant, Mr. Mark Wallace of Tech Environmental.
Okay. And we have a peer review on...
Jim Barnes represents.
Okay.
Nice tech. Yep.
All right. So, um, where sh, where should we start off? I know there was some email correspondence in between.
Yep. And where we left off was, um, one of the butters had asked to provide, uh, a response. And I forwarded that email to you, to you all, I don't know if everyone got it or not. And I sent that off, off to the applicant as well. And I'm anticipating a response from them tonight, or from our consultant as well. See what comes from that. I think we were, we talked about this, the civil engineering stuff has been care-reviewed and is, it is all set. We're not looking at that at this point, we're just looking at the sound. So, we, we gave the butters a chance to provide comments, they have, and we'd like to see the applicants address those.
Okay. Um, by chance, is the email in here?
No.
Or the correspondence?
No, it was sent digitally.
Okay. I, I know I saw it digitally, I just didn't know if I could pull up the paper to look at it, so, um, if we can have someone from your team go over maybe any of the responses or answers from that?
Do you guys want to start, if you want to have Mark jump right in with?
I would say Mark should jump in.
Yep. Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening. So if you wouldn't mind, um, I assume you have the emails and the responses in front of you? And, um, if you could walk us through that, I think that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Sure. Um, so for the record, my name is Mark Wallace, um, with Tech Environmental. I am a sound consultant for the applicant. I received, uh, two, uh, emails with letters from comments from the, um, from the community. Let's see, the first one was, um, yeah, from, was from, I think, 36 Monroe Street. And the, uh, there were a number of questions related to the sound study. The first being, um, so it asks, um, "As the neighbors of butter to the proposed new project site, we are concerned that the noise propagation from rock drilling and crushing equipment just 400 feet from our property and 800 feet from our house will significantly negatively impact the comfort, enjoyment, life and property, a right recognized by the mass DP noise policy." It asserts that noise pollution occurs when an activity is more than 10 decibels over ambient. So, we've discussed this before at the, at the last meeting. The analysis that we had performed was a screening level analysis, you know, again, based on all the sound sources, um, at the closest point of the property. So, um, this is, in this assumption, the equation that we use, we're assuming all this equipment is making that sound at the closest property point to her property. And a couple of things I'd like to note, as I, as I stated before, is that the equation doesn't take into account topography, uh, ground absorption, atmospheric absorption. Furthermore, any kind of operations of rock drilling and crushing will be, will require berms and walls to minimize, um, sound levels. So, again, we're very conservative in our assumptions with our evaluation. I'd also like to note there, that there's, um, there's gonna be quite a bit of buffer of wooded area between her property and where the work zone is, so that'll have an additional sound attenuation due to the, um, due to the, that added wooded area. It's not significant, but it is noteworthy that there would be some sound reduction associated with that. The next question, uh, was related to, uh, the sound site uses for its basis noise levels at the existing gravel facility that's above 400 feet from our house. That's almost twice as far from our, us at the property site. We request if, uh, that if extrapolation is used, it should be based on specifications of actual equipment that would be employed at the new and much closer site. So, it's our understanding that the same equipment that's being used, uh, at the existing site would be used at the future site. So, again, our screening level analysis is based on the actual equipment being used. Um, it's not based on any kind of specification or any other types of different equipment. Let's see, the, uh, the next, uh, question was, following our specific comments on Tech Environmental document dated July 31st, 2024, um, this comment is, uh, related to, uh, one-time blasting of, uh, the events, uh, and, and rock crushing, um, and that the, the testing that was done didn't take into account, uh, blasting. So, again, this, the mass DP noise policy does not regulate, uh, blasting, uh, noise or vibration. Um, however, the blasting contractor is required to follow the requirements under, uh, 527 CMR 13, which is, uh, requires that noise from blasting is not regulated under, again, as I mentioned before, not regulated under, um, 310 CMR 710 for the mass DP noise policy. So, whatever requirements are associated with the blasting, um, regulations, the, uh, the blasting contractor is required to, uh, do certain types of sound and vibration measurements before and after that testing. And again, it's not associated with the, um, analysis of, of our evaluation of sound from, uh, normal construction, uh, normal crushing and rock activities.
One second, sir.
Mark, could you cite that CMR one more time, please?
I have 527, uh, CMR 13.
Thank you. Sorry, continue.
So the next one was about common measures of environmental sound. That was from our, uh, sound study. And the, the comment was related to the fact that, um, we're talking about using L10 sound level measurements, um, which we have noted and was noted by the peer review that, you know, this is a sound level that exceeded, uh, six minutes of every, uh, 60-minute measurement, uh, which is a significant nuisance many times of the day, is the comment. In addition, the data cannot be extrapolated to different locations where the level of actual operations could entirely be different or much greater. The special permit does not limit the applicant to just six minutes of noise pollution per six, uh, per hour, six days per week. So we do acknowledge the fact that the L10 sound level is, represents the loudest six minutes in an hour. However, the screening level analysis that we, uh, that we performed show that the L10 sound level will be 45 decibels, and when you compare that to the L90 ambient sound level, now, the L90 is the quietest six minutes in an hour, so that sound level's exceeded 90% of the time. So what you're doing is you're comparing the loudest six minutes to the quietest six minutes in this evaluation, which is very conservative, um, and it does show that we're in compliance with the mass DP noise policy. And again, we're not taking into consideration, um, sound mitigation or, or topography or ground absorption, um, around the site. So again, it's a very conservative approach, uh, that we're demonstrating compliance with the mass DP noise policy. Let's see, uh, there were some other comments here related to, we'd like a further explanation "We'd like a further explanation of the observation that, that location one, it was possibly adhered construction industry activity to the north, to the north of the wooded area and then across the street an old golf course. The fact that there is now a warehouse nearby is immaterial. At the time this sound study was done, we don't recall that there being any construction activity. Even if you want to insist that the sound from the existing McIntyre facility is inaudible at location one, that does not mean that when the project is moved to the immediately adjacent to location one, that it's still inaudible." So that, so for that location, it was noted by our sound engineers that what you only, what you really hear at that location, you don't hear the existing facility. You hear other activities to the north, you know, which was noted. And you also hear Route 46, the traffic in the distance. The sound levels that we measured were, you know, in the, during the daytime were 36 to 43 decibels, which is very consistent with sort of a quiet suburban area that does have, you know, some other sound sources nearby. So, you know, our sound engineers, when they set up the equipment and when they deploy them and then take it down, we're noting the fact, and we were there a few other times during the measurement period, that we noted that there was, you couldn't hear the existing facility, but you could only hear what other sound sources were primarily to the north and to the east. Let's see, next comment is, "It seems like the odd, seems odd that the sound levels measured at location one resulted in busy roadways and nearby noises when the McIntyre facility is near our industrial site, but it's apparent not creating any noise even though it's 1300 feet away. Meanwhile, roosters and chickens are really amping up the decibel level." So our report wasn't suggesting that roosters and chickens are increasing the ambient sound levels. The normal procedures for when you're doing sound measurements is to note what you actually hear out there. So it doesn't, we weren't suggesting that the chickens and the roosters were causing a higher sound level than other, the other sound sources in the area. The report notes that there is a large hill between location one and the existing McIntyre facility, implying that there could be the reason that the sound is not carrying to location one. As there's no such large hill to deflect sound between the proposed new project area and location one, it does not seem reasonable to draw a noise level comparison. So the selection of location one was not to necessarily do a comparison between location one, location two, but was to actually capture ambient conditions in such that the facility was inaudible or, you know, not contributing to the ambient sound levels. Because again, when we're doing our evaluation, we want to have a clean set of data that's not being contaminated by sound from the, from the existing facility. So the fact that there was a hill in the area did help to probably screen some of that sound out. But it was also 2,000 feet away, so it helped to, you know, again, further reduce the sound. And again, you know, there's also topography and, you know, and, you know, ground absorption that's also helping to reduce the sound. Let's see, Table four, location two is approximately 200 feet from heavy equipment, listed as jaw crusher, screener, cone crushers, and screen multiple front-end loaders, excavators, and heavy truck traffic, and they're noted as being the predominant sound source. Crushers typically have sound levels of 75 to 85 dB at 50 feet and can be much higher. Front-end loaders and excavators produce some sound at similar levels. A warning horn goes at 85 decibels, heavy trucks at 90 decibels. When several pieces of machinery are active, the sound levels increase. The reviewer noted that the presence of an impact hammer, which typically produces sound levels of 95 decibels. Sound from this type of equipment attenuates at 6 decibels, very doubling at distance, increases as you reduce the distance. Therefore, if the sound is at 200 feet from the source, average of 656, then at 100 feet it would be 62, and 50 it would be 68. It's worth, it would seem to me that the McIntyre low crushers and excavators all have sound levels way below the industry standards. Instead of producing a sound level of 80-plus decibels, they're producing a sound level of 68 decibels when the multiple machines are operating, the backup alarms are functioning. Very convenient study then concludes that the extrapolation of sound from the proposed infrage will be under the limit of 46 decibels. So the 56 decibels is at 225, 225 feet. The, you know, the sound levels that are being extrapolated to the nearest residences, again, are being impacted by the fact that there's topography and atmospheric absorption and ground absorption. So that significantly increases the amount of sound attenuation you get with distance. So we're assuming everything's sort of a flat plate, sound is reflecting off of that. That's what the 6 decibel for doubling a distance assumes. So those factors, again, were not included in our screening level analysis, and it still demonstrates compliance with the Mass D E P noise policy. Let's see. I think the other comments are, there weren't specific questions, but just actual comments related to the Centec review and a note on blasting related to, I think, dust and silica, which is not something that I'm an expert on at this, on this particular subject. So I believe I've answered all the questions if I haven't. I'm sure, well, we can discuss that further. The other letter was from Wallneck Row Street. There were questions related to the study again. So in this one, they were asking for the ANSI standard, which, which we cited in our report. They were unable to get the, they had an old version they were able to get on the internet and couldn't obtain the newer version. And, but specifically what they were concerned about was the methods that are cited in that standard. There are ones that are for general methods for doing sound measurements from sound sources, as well as a more specific measurement procedure. And so they were, they were noting that the fact that the, under method one, the sound level measurements were reported 225 feet, which exceeds the 30-meter or 99-foot requirement when measurements are not being performed downwind, when the winds are exceeding five meters per second, which is where they generally are on the days in question. Again, we were citing the Worcester Airport and local weather station data. Looking at the tech report in conjunction with the Worcester Airport weather data and confirming with local weather stations, the prevailing one for the day was from the west and northwest, this would place the measurement upwind of all sound sources being measured. Measuring device was placed at the west side of the site, and traffic comes from the south, and equipment would be from the east and southeast. Why was the sound measurement not performed downwind of the sound sources? My second concern about the test method one would be that the days of testing were sunny, or mostly sunny, and at times low or no wind. Method one, again, has rules around the distance with respect to these meteorological conditions. If there are any changes to the standard test methods, is it possible to get access to that standard? So, so we followed proper procedures and protocols for doing the sound measurements, keeping in mind the fact that this is a large area with a number of quasi-stationary mobile sources. So we selected a location that was representative of trying to capture all the sound from all the sound sources, not from a, not from a specific sound source is what the, the standard is primarily based upon. With regards to the weather conditions, so we did sampling, you know, for multiple hours and multiple days. The Worcester data that, that was cited in our report. So Worcester Airport is about 1,000 feet in elevation and is much higher than what this area is. In addition, measurements are taken at a height of 30 meter, or 30 feet, or about 10 meters above, above ground level. The standard, what they're reporting there are the five meters per second, is at two meters height. So what they're trying to, what you're trying to do with your measurements at that height is to screen out any data that would be on windy conditions that might, when the wind is blowing across the microphone, could contaminate or elevate the sound levels. So even though we noted that the, that the wind speeds were, I think, approximately 10 to 15 miles per hour, the things you have to keep in mind are that that was just to give a general idea of what the weather conditions were during the sampling period and were not necessarily to determine whether there was any contamination of, of the noise measurements at the, at the sound meter. Let's see, my overall concern with this question is that the Tech Environmental report has current, this special permit issued operation barely passing 45 dB a actual versus 46 dB a limit. As discussed at the August 14th planning board meeting, the data collected in conjunction with the equation provided do not match conditions observed. If the sound measurements were performed upwind of the sound source, could that be enough to eschew results and explain why I'm hearing sounds inside my house? But according to the screening level equation, I should not be even hearing the noise outside. So as I, as I said multiple times here, the equation again is based on a very conservative assumption of, of the sound, a 6 decibel of reduction for every doubling of distance. But again, doesn't take into account, you know, the other environmental factors that I've mentioned on a number of occasions. And it doesn't take into account wind speed or, or direction. As to why this gentleman's hearing the sounds or hearing sound in his house, I can't answer that question. All I can say is that based on our conservative approach, the sound levels are in compliance with the Mass D E P noise policy, you know, at the nearest residences. According to the tech report, Table two, a common outdoor noise of the impact hammer, using the formula provided in conjunction with the data in Table two, it shows 56.4 at my house 2,400 feet away. What frequency level is typical of an impact hammer, hall ram? How effective are berms that deflect in these frequencies? Assuming the berm will direct upward rather than absorb most of the sound, how effective will a berm be with clouds, low clouds, or under more humid or cloudy conditions? How critical is the location to operation of the hall ram in relations to the berm? So there are multiple things that are going on in this question. The, again, you know, the calculation is what it is. It takes, does not take into account the, the atmospheric absorption, you know, topography, whatnot. So the sound levels are, you know, if you were to assume a higher sound level, you would, it would predict 56.4. But you're not taking into account all these other factors that are going into that, you know, into that evaluation. Again, assuming that the berms are, let's see, I might, maybe step back first. The impact ham, hammer, it can produce some low-frequency sounds, but primarily it's producing, excuse me, sound levels at mid or high-frequency sound level. So those mid to high-frequency sound levels tend to wash out pretty quickly with distance. Some of the low-frequency sounds can, can travel a little bit further. But the berms are very effective in reducing both low-frequency sounds as well as mid to high-frequency sounds. Obviously, having a sound source closest to the berm, you get your maximum sound level reduction. And so further away, you would get less effective sound reduction for a source from, from a particular berm or barrier. You know, as far as weather conditions do, yeah, weather can play a part as to how sound travels. You know, sound at night, for example, if you've got clear skies and certain stable inversions that can occur, that makes the sound travel further. During sunny cloud, during sort of mixed atmospheric conditions during the daytime, you know, less so that that sound may be traveling again, it may be due to how that sound will be traveling during those different atmospheric conditions. Then, you know, again, I want to make sure that it's understood that the berms are excellent at absorbing sound because they're made of earth materials that are great absorbers of sound waves and do not reflect sound levels up into the atmosphere. So those are my responses to the, to those particular letters. And obviously, if there's some follow-up on that, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. And anything from, Jim, okay.
Sir.
Hi, Jim, we're going to go to you for, for your follow-up comments.
Sounds good, okay. I'm Jim Barnes, I'm a colleague of Mike Petarian at Centec. And as you know, we've been hired by the town to perform peer review of the study of this project on the sound side. Mike is away, so he asked that I step in. I did have a chance to review the submittals, both the studies that were done by Tech Environmental that had the, both original and then the revised report, as well as more recent email that Mark just referred to. I think it was the second letter from a resident, he worked, that was identified in email. I guess stepping back a bit, I think overall, Centec accepts the methodology that is used by Tech Environmental during this evaluation process. A couple items that I could talk about. One is, they use the average L10 level of 56 dB that was measured by their long-term monitor, relatively close in 225 feet away or so from the equipment. And in that case, it's an average level. There were one or two hours that were certainly higher than that and a couple that were lower than that. And I think it does respond to the spirit of the mass noise regulation and also the Mass D E P noise policy. It's not going to predict the absolute maximum one, nor the minimum one. I think it is a reasonable level that they've used for the sound from the proposed activity. The background level that was identified at location, let's see, one, I believe, out in the community, not location two onsite, but the one out in the community, is a reasonable level as well, certainly for suburban area during the daytime. So I think their noise level that they've used in a 4 to 6 dB that responds to the Mass D E P noise policy is appropriate. And the, so the comparison where they have the on-sites and then propagating it out to the community, I think, also in agreement with the, will it be sometimes greater or sometimes less? Absolutely. But I think for the reasonable level that he had. And I think Tech Environmental's note about having, not even use the attenuation due to atmospheric absorption or foliage or ground does provide some conservatism. Overall, we do welcome having a berm out there. As I said, you're going to have some levels that are going to be above and some below the average. And so having a berm, which can provide typically, we find, you know, maybe five to 10 dB of, of noise reduction by putting that in would be helpful. I submitted some brief comments by email back to the town earlier today. So those could be, I guess, disseminated if you like.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Benoile, I'll just defer to you for follow-up.
We also have their recommendation from Mason Tech about the post-construction survey. They recommended two types of survey. They recommended an attended survey and an unattended survey. I spoke to the applicant about that. And the attended survey seems a bit much. They're absolutely on board for the unattended survey, which it calls for four different measurement locations. One at the center of the McIntyre new area of operation. Location two is 36 Monroe property line. Location three is 776 Hartford Avenue West property line and 694 Hartford Avenue West property line. So I think that gives them four different points to measure for the post-construction survey. It's a matter of when we're going to ask for this post-construction survey, what point under construction, like once the earth removal bond is removed, once that's all set, that's sometime when we do the post-construction survey, would make the most sense.
All right, board, any comments or questions?
Sound engineer has provided his comments, and our peer review has provided verification of their review. So our sound study expert has verified that their findings are accurate. That's where we're at right now. Recommend the post-construction survey.
Through the chair, I just have a couple of questions. Rock drills. Have any rock drills on site at an important time?
Through the chair. When they blast, there'll be a drill, but we don't own one.
Right, right. I agree with everything in the survey analysis, the whole deal. But when it comes to the hammer, rock drill, we've got to be careful on our operation. Big time. Something went down on Oak Street?
Okay, I can hear you guys, so you don't have to yell. But yeah.
So yeah, we have the, on the hammer and on any drilling. So, yeah, we have to, on the hammer and on any drilling, when that can be done. It has to be laid out really clear. Because we've had circumstances in town with drilling going on. And telling me right now, 1,000 feet doesn't mean nothing with a drill going. So something to think about here.
And what are the proposed, can you confirm the proposed work hours?
So our hours of operation are 7 to 5, Monday through Friday. And we wouldn't do that on a Saturday. And we're not open on Sunday. So it would be a Monday through Friday operation.
Are the mics working out there?
You mean during the week? I don't know about a rock drill going off at 7:00 AM. And I have audio, video of it happening. So if you wanna hear what it sounds like, it's not good. I could say 8, but not 7. Personally, I'm just speaking for myself. Saturdays, thank you. I see that out the door, no hammering, no drilling on Saturdays. But even during the week, you don't wanna hear a rock drill at 7:00 AM.
Also, through the chair, this would also include not holidays, because they could be weekdays, not like, you know, Labor Day.
Yeah, that's.
Fourth of July, you know, people have people over, you know. Let's, yeah.
So what this board can regulate is construction hours, hours during construction, not operation hours. It's regulated by the select.
But during construction as well.
During construction.
Construction, not on holidays. Not holidays.
So, yeah, through the chair.
You don't work any.
We don't work major holidays, but we play Patriots Day, for instance, we do work on the day. So we would be working on that.
Our standard hours read New Year's, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas.
These are your standard days.
So, Mike, are you maybe thinking a, maybe like an 8:00 AM?
Yep.
For drilling?
Hammer, hammer and drilling.
Would that be something you'd be maybe okay with?
Maybe okay? I don't love the idea, but I would, if it gets us over the goal line, I'd say yes.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that when comes the decision time. Any other comments, Mr. Benoit? Okay. Board, any other comments, questions?
Sure, through the chair.
Mr. DeRoz.
The agreement to do a post-construction noise survey is really important, I think, for the board because that's really gonna tell us what the end result is. And unfortunately, there is, I think everybody understands, you're gonna hear something. I mean, it's just, yeah, we, those of us who live on the north side of town, at night, we can hear the trucks on 146, you know? But it's not annoying. And I think if we get results from the study that show 50 dB or something like that, you know, then we're saying, okay, so it didn't turn out quite right, and then we could do some remediation. And I think that puts us in a position where, you know, we're also supporting the town. Because it's, we're looking for a win-win. I mean, we want you to be able to be successful and we want to support all the people in the town, especially those who are gonna be, you know, closer, well, you'll be closer to them now than you were before. So I was happy to see that.
We plan on being here and being good neighbors for many years. We don't want our neighbors to be upset with us. So we have great faith in our engineers and what these designs will certainly work. And if for some reason it doesn't, we'll do what we can to make it work. We do not wanna be in this town. That's not the goal. We wanna do what we do, we give a neighbor doing. You know, we, I took a site walk with Mike for a different reason, my property, and we walked through the new site.
Matt, yeah.
Yeah, Mike was not there, but he's down there. So, you know, they are close when you get to that upper corner. And, you know, there'll be quite a bit of topography that will come into play with the additional berm. You know, it's almost inaudible. You have to really work hard to hear it now, and we're hoping that that's the way it works, you know, moving on, even being that much closer to the town.
Thank you. All right. Board, any other questions before I go to the public?
I did have one question. Matt, did you say that they would only like to do the unattended survey and not the attended?
Can we turn the mics up? They're shaking, they can't hear out there.
I think we might.
These mics not up?
Yeah, we're gonna take a quick minute break, yeah.
Dead over here. Oh, I'm sorry, it's new. It's worse.
Can you hear me now?
That's an ambient sound.
Dude, you did that.
It is, isn't it, Mr. Engineer?
If only they were here in person, we could've figured this out.
Check, check, check.
Just turn them up.
That portable one is on. You can use that if you need to.
We shouldn't have to.
All right.
Want me to pass this your way?
We have all these mics.
Check one, two, check. As long as you're close to it, you're fine.
Let's put them closer, that's all.
Bob?
The only one we can hear is really you, because you're close to the mic. Everybody else speaks about two feet away from the mic. They're not open speakers.
All right. So I just try to talk more into the mic and use a louder, more presentable voice so everyone can hear you, I guess. And we have someone, and he's gonna listen to make sure everything's working technical wise, but if everyone on the board and even everyone presenting, if you can just do your best to speak up loud. Even you, Mr. Benoit.
So I was asking about the attended versus unattended survey. And the, they would only, they would prefer to do the unattended survey. Does the peer reviewer have an opinion in terms of only doing one versus both?
That's a good question. I'm speaking with Jim's colleague. He did not have an issue with it, but Jim is here. You could talk to him about that.
Well, my experience is that having a set of measurements over a period of time, particularly for residents that are a pretty good distance away, where the operations are gonna change from hour to hour and maybe day to day, and meteorological conditions are also gonna vary over time, then having unattended measurements over a period of time is very helpful. And then similar to what Tech Environmental did during their baseline study, their field people went out and took observations. So I kinda look for a hybrid approach. I'd like to have the numbers informed by somebody out there, whether it needs to be as rigorous, in-depth that Mike had suggested. Certainly that would help do the trick to be able to characterize what the facility is contributing out to the community. But, you know, I believe in reality, too, we have to do something that makes sense. So I think the unattended, and then at least have the team that goes out and installs and removes it, be able to spend some time and give a listen, as well as making those closer-in measurements, too. That was suggested, much like what Tech Environmental's baseline study had, put into some closer-in measurements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
For the one-week unattended survey, would that, would all of the equipment that's listed in the attended survey be utilized within that one-week period?
So we do different things on every day. What we have been doing typically, and it's not every day, every week, but typical, it's the same when Matt was there the other day, we're running two crushers, two loaders, an excavator and a screening plane. We were not running a rock hammer, but we did for a few moments while it was there so we could hear. That's a typical day.
Okay.
Now, could I say that they'll be working every day for a week? They probably wouldn't be, but they would certainly be working for a few of those days. We have specific employees that run specific machines, so if we weren't using them, they're not working. So typically, they are working.
Okay.
If I can ask a question. The attended versus the unattended, again, the unattended, can it discern that, hey, that's a crusher? Or that's the hammer? Or there's nobody here? Or does it just say, these are the sound levels, and it doesn't discern what the equipment is being used unless there's observation? Am I right in that, saying that? Unless you have an attendant to take notes on what type of equipment or who's on-site and, you know, that kind of thing, or? To the engineers.
If I may add, be able to inform the unattended measurements. One could have recordings, but it's very difficult many times to separate out sources kinda after the fact. But I would spend some effort in the unattended to still have a person go out there and be able to characterize the sound emissions of the equipment. So you do some drop-off measurements, you go 50 feet, 100 feet, and work yourself out to the different community locations, kinda doubling in the distance. And so that helps to, well, characterize what are the sound emissions of the equipment, and then you can see, does that make sense, what we're really measuring out in the community? And then probably, and it's really up to the applicant, I guess, to develop a sound compliance measurement program. I think for our review was how it was placed, I understood. But they would also, during the time, be able to identify what equipment is operating throughout that whole week.
Well, thank you, yeah. I think attended, you're saying should be part of it. Thank you.
Try to get close to them.
Oh, so I think you have suggested that unattended and attended works in concert together to come out with an accurate representation of the decibel level and the type of equipment being used and what, who's on-site and such like that. That's, seems like what you've recommended. I'm just asking.
Yes, provides confidence in what you're measuring out in the community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your answer.
And else, board? Okay. Anyone in the audience with a question or comment? Mr. Flansburgh? You can, you know the deal, just come up a little bit closer so everyone can hear you.
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe Street.
Yes, Jeremy?
I have two comments and one question. At the last meeting, I requested that a post, or excuse me, a pre-blast survey be done at my house. And I just would think that that would be a simple request, seeing as that we're gonna be neighbors, or we are neighbors. My second request, I forget what that is now. My last question is, is this berm, is there any trees being planted on this berm?
Okay. Do you be able to maybe answer both, or?
As currently designed, it's just a fill placement, and then that would naturalize over time and grow it. It's not gonna be tamed, it's not gonna be mowed, weed whacked, everything's gonna grow.
So a natural berm, but not, no tree plantings?
But there are a lot of vegetation behind that with long, older growth trees.
Okay.
That are pretty high.
And comment on the pre-inspection?
We will do that.
Okay.
When we.
Yeah, I think that would be something you would work together on for that.
I just remembered what my third comment was.
Okay.
And I couldn't hear, but it might've already been discussed. What's going on with Saturday operations? It seems to get really loud on Fridays when the townhouse closed and on Saturdays. And it's, it's just not, you know, having a cookout in the backyard. If he could do something, you know, I get maybe, you know, he wants to sell his gravel and stuff, but can we stop the rock crushing operations and the rampoes on Saturday? Thank you.
Follow-up?
We don't, we actually do blast processing on Saturdays. Then we do typical week, during the week. We, during the construction phase, when we had blasted ledge, we were probably crushing. Right now, we're not. There's probably screening, but we're not cone crushing, which is a generator that goes with that, that's not running. It's much less, and we haven't really run the hammer much in the last month. You know, maybe a handful of days over, but it hasn't been a lot.
Mr. Flansburgh, was your comments or questions answered or given time to?
Saturday's norm really wasn't, but it was a good try, I guess, but.
Well, with that operation, that's a whole separate site plan.
Well, I understand, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
I get that. And I understand that there's work hours. Typically, like Mr. Pine never did Saturdays. It's just, as I said, it's nice to have your weekends to yourself. I mean, I mean, just with the noise, it's just really noisy. And as I said, it seems to get really noisy on Fridays and on Saturdays, when nobody's around.
All right. So we'll take the comments into consideration and sound study, follow-up, we'll take that into consideration as well, so. Anyone else in the audience? Sir?
So Robert Mills, R. 30 Walnut Road Street.
Just come up a little closer.
So I guess, it was mentioned, the post-study about the end of construction phase. Is there a set construction phase or an idea? Because I think I missed last meeting, but at the meeting before, it was talked about that you're planning on being there in perpetuity, basically. So I guess I was just curious of what your projected construction or when that post-study, I guess, might be executed.
Okay, good question.
Through the chair. Based on how long it's taken in this first parcel, we expect that portion to take about 18 months. You know, factors could delay that a little bit with weather or unforeseen stuff, I don't really know right now, but if everything goes to plan, we're expecting the construction portion to take about 18 months. Once it's leveled into the plan, we will be there processing and doing our normal operation for as soon as we can.
So, excuse me.
Paul.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead. Did that answer your question?
That's perfect. My question, or my response to that is, can we go ahead and set a timeframe so that way it's already set up, established? If it needs to be pushed out, I understand weather, extensions, things of that nature, but could we go ahead and set a goal?
Mr. Benoit?
Special permits are good for three years.
Okay.
That's as, that's as, that's as few as we could allow.
So, I mean, that gives you 36 months instead of the 18 that you're.
Can I respond?
Yes.
We, we're not operating efficiently while we're doing this construction phase, so it benefits us to be done as soon as we can be done. And get. it benefits us to be done as soon as we can be done, and get on to our normal operation. So we don't have an interest in trying it itself in three years, we want it done.
Mr. Socrate?
All set, thank you.
All right. Yeah. Anyone else in the audience? Ms. Van Reed?
Yep. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
And thanks for extending this public hearing, so I can make some comments.
Good call, ma'am.
Oh, I kind of feel like I'm at the debate stage, you know?
You couldn't do worse than the others.
Okay.
You're the emcee now, let's go.
I have like, two minutes, or how much time do I have here?
You don't have, you don't have two hours, let's say that.
Okay. So, again, thank you for extending the public meeting for the last time, and I did send like, a three-page memo to the board, and I assume you have all looked at that, and so I don't want to go over that again. I do want to just reiterate a couple of points, and one of the, one of the first ones is, and this was not, was not in my notes, but I'm just trying to understand the basic premise. What if we started over again, and there was no existing McIntyre site to compare with? How would you do a sound study? What would be the basis of a sound study? And why would that not be appropriate at this point? And the reason I'm questioning that is, you know, the study reports that the sound from the existing McIntyre location was now audible at location one, which is my property line. Our house is about the same distance away. We can, and we do hear the noise from the facility. Some days, like Mr. Palmer said, we don't, there's no activity, other days, it's all day long. But this morning, it started at 6:08, when I woke up. Okay, so, so we're using the existing site, but how does that relate to the new site, which is twice as close to us? And the topography is different. So why don't we, can we start over? It's implausible to think that we will not hear it when it's twice as close to us. We would like the sound study be done based on the specs and the ratings of the equipment that's there, the rock crushers, the trucks, the excavators, that we hear. You know, the sound, can I explain it to you? It's like rocks in a truck. It's thuds, it's honks, it's just all kinds of noise. And noise is an annoyance, and it's not allowed, and that's what we hear. And they're proposing to put it twice as close to us as it is today. Please, can we do use a different basis, and not one that is not, that it has issues? Okay, we talked about blasting, I mentioned that in my notes. I understand now that blasting is not part of SDEP, and that why it wasn't included. However, it's a real thing. Blasting occurs at over 100 decibels. Because, do we want to do that for the next two, three years? No! Do you? I had a question about how long the blasting will occur, and that was answered, thank you. Another thing is, in some meetings in the past, one of the board members here mentioned that there'll be an 11-acre dust bowl, and I think that bears further discussion as well. Another one was the post-construction period, again, you kind of talked about it, but what is that? When does that actually start? Is it, is that a timeframe, or is it when there's, at some level, have activity? Is it like, six months? Nine months? A year? Is it after they've done a certain amount of work? I think that could stand a better definition. The sound study mentions the possibility of a berm to attenuate the noise level, but it also states that it has to be higher than the line of sight. Can we get details on those specifications? Where does line of sight begin? Our house is much higher than the property line with the McIntyre site, so that would be a very, very tall berm, and I would certainly like to know if that's going to be built, how high that's going to be, and if it's going to be above the line of sight. This is, this, I know, I know I'm in the weeds now, but you know, sound is, sound is a very strange thing. We, we live about 2,000 feet from the Cubes at Gilboa. When that place was being built, we didn't hear it. We would not have known that that construction was going on. But last week, they were planting trees, and for two or three days, we could hear the back hose and the sound horn, right on West Hartford Ave. So how strange is that? We didn't hear them build the building, but we could hear them planting the trees in front of it, you know, the construction equipment. Just pointing out that you can't not extrapolate that noise in location two is going to be the same as location one. It just doesn't make sense to me. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Benoit.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Reed, can I just, Ms. Van Reed?
Yes.
You said something about noise not allowed. Can you just elaborate? I don't know what you were trying to say, you said noise isn't allowed, but noise...
Noise limit?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I was trying to, in your point, you specifically said something about noise isn't allowed, but...
Nuisance.
No, you mean nuisance isn't allowed, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Right, I'm sorry, noise, yes, the noise...
Because, yeah, you can make a noise.
No, but, but...
You can cut your, yeah.
It rises to nuisance or annoyance, it's an issue.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you can pick apart some of those questions or comments?
Comment on a few of them. So, the 6:08 activity starting, that wasn't us. Seven o'clock is when we start working, they get to the site 15 minutes before that, 20 minutes before that, they do start their equipment, but it's at an idle. It wasn't us. There's nothing moving, there's no speech of buzzers or alarms.
Might be a lyric.
There's a lot, there's a lot going on around town. I, unless someone has a video of somebody at any of these sites starting up early, it's going to be, that's a tough one to, to point at them.
So, and then, a comment about the Cube's building being built supports the topography of this site. That building is a lot lower than the street level, and certainly, in where their house is, their house sits a lot higher than that. But that building was built at the base of the...
In a bowl, really?
In a bowl. It was at a very low level. So they were basically bermed from the site, from here in that site, and this is exactly what's going to happen with this site.
Berm?
The berm itself, the effective height of the berm on the project side is 28 feet. So it's pretty significant, and then it's, again, a flat gravel floor on the east side of that berm.
And our peer review has looked at the berm and granted it's a blessing.
It's three stories, three stories.
It's tall, and it's, so when I say effective height, it was already a 20-foot cup, and then we added 10 feet to it in the form of a berm. So your total effective height is almost 30 feet.
And if you can just go over your dust control measures or proposals?
Absolutely. So we have a water tanker that stays on site, we run it around, today we ran it around, two days ago we ran it around, we soak the site. When the tanker goes out, the site stays wet for the day. In between the tanker, we have a water truck that we put together, and I run that, and I do it the other days. And we, I put out, the tanker is 8,000 gallons each load, we put out two loads a day. The truck is 3,000 gallons, and I put out two loads a day. So there's a lot more water going out on the tanker days, but we've watered every day. We can't, we can't work without it, it's too dusty.
Yeah, can I, can I ask you, the chair, do you have a well, will you have a well on site? Do you have some sort of well?
We're lucky enough that pine sand is allowing us to see the water, and so...
But you're traveling out to it and bringing it back.
Yeah, the truck, the truck that I do, I go to pine, the tanker we bring down to the mill in Eastville, and we buy water from them.
Just might have to find a, a new pine.
Right.
Right.
You may want to dig a well, just have some sort of well. Have your own, I think it would be great, yeah.
We'll do a well when we have power.
Right, right. But, I mean, then you'd have water at your command anytime, less trucks running back and forth, and a win-win, maybe.
100%, yeah, so until then, this is what we have.
Right, until then, but, yeah.
And, not speaking just for this project, because we don't know if it's going to be approved, but if there is, if anyone in the audience or online listen does have a concern with dust control from this, from McIntyre's site, from Pine's site, from any site, just reach out to the community development department, let them know that you have a concern, and they're going to look into it, and make sure that they're abiding by their approved plans. Anyone else in the audience?
Rick Neder, 21 grocery, I promise I'll be extremely brief. I would just ask if, if the board moves forward with the post-construction analysis, that maybe try to add some more crisp language into the requirements, just to make it clear, you know, you guys discussed, I think, a lot of good things tonight about where the points are and stuff, just kind of memorialize that in that permit, so that it's fair to everybody, so it's very clear, this is exactly what needs to be done, there's not any ambiguity. That's what I would ask, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Ms. Benoit, you got that?
Yeah, so, I guess for our sound engineer through the chair, when is the best time to do these things? Spring, when there's leaves on the trees, you know, summer, fall? When is the best time to do these? I would assume probably not the winter. Should be for either, either Mark or Jim, whoever wants to take that.
So, I think, I think taking measurements in the late fall or wintertime makes a lot of sense, because by then you're also taking into account the fact that you're not having a lot of insect noise or contamination from that, and generally speaking, the sound levels, there's less human activity with people outside, you know, mowing their lawns or doing other kinds of things, so makes it easier to discern whether the sound levels are actually coming from the source itself, or, you know, and not from something else going on near the site.
Okay, so depending on when construction's done, maybe a caveat to say, post-construction sound study must be completed within 180 days, presuming that, let's say it's finished in April, they could do it in October and still be in compliant, right? Do it in the fall, or they finish in March, maybe they do it in the winter. How many days do you want to consider that?
If I may, I mean, just an opinion, excuse me, through the chair. The fact that the neighbors will be putting up, as partnerships in some way, 18 months of construction there, it seems like the sooner the better, after your completion of construction, so that the right remedies could be taken, and lessen the amount of time they would be exposed to something that's not been corrected. That's all, that's all I would say.
Would it be 90 days, perhaps?
Probably 90 days, anyway, yeah. I mean, I don't care insects twilling or whatever they're doing, but that doesn't really matter.
At least give us a base, that there needs to be immediate changes.
Pretty immediate, yeah.
Okay. And board, any questions or comments? Mr. Benoit, any kind of, any follow-up, or?
No, no, it's just, we have to go over the waivers at some point, if you want to do that, once we close the public hearing, that's perfectly normal.
Okay.
We have three applications to vote on, so there's plenty to do.
Okay. You guys have anything else to, to add, or?
Nope.
Okay. Mark or Jim, any, anything else to add?
I don't think so. If I may just say, I think it's very useful to be able to have the post-construction survey done relatively soon. Each season has its kind of pluses and minuses on it, one could argue. Well, neighbors, they're going to be disturbed by it, maybe a better chance to be more disturbed in the summer, maybe the shoulder season, when there's more of a chance that they'll be downwind of the site. But then there are leaves on the trees, so there's never a firm answer. So I would just have, have it done after completion of the project, when you're starting operation, and just be aware that if there are some issues, you may well look at it maybe in more detail, as, as the seasons kind of roll on.
Thank you, Jim.
So we talked about the unattended survey, but have the representative who posts the equipment at least be there during different types of sound to be able to take notes on that? That's kind of what he said?
Attended, yeah.
Yeah.
A mix of both.
Yeah, it's kind of like a hybrid survey. How does the applicant feel about that?
So, if I'm understanding it correctly, they're going to set up a sound monitor similar to the way they did for this study.
Yeah.
But instead of three days, it'll be for a week, and then you're suggesting maybe somebody from TAC or whoever comes in daily to record what we're using on those days, maybe conditions of the weather and all that stuff.
I think so.
I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right. If the board doesn't have any other questions or comments, at that point, we can close the public hearing and do our business. So, we'll entertain a motion to close a public hearing for McIntyre. For the special permit, earth removal permit, site plan review, all 240416. To close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Greco, same by Mitch Lushman. Any further discuss?
I did, I said...
Oh, you did?
She went for it.
These are my left ear.
This is my right ear.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstain. Upstain. Haven't got enough yet, sorry.
Okay, so we have an exception for Mr. Socrate and Mr. Gannett to close it, but we have the votes, so it is closed. My favorite. All right, so let's talk about the use special permit first. This is for the use of the outdoor manufacturing within the industrial district, use permit. I don't think, I mean, I'll end up drafting these both together along with the earth removal permit, but I think we should vote on each of the three separately. The use permit alone, we should vote on that first.
For the outdoor manufacturing?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have one?
And for that, it's an industrial zone, there's allowed use in the industrial zone, and the sound engineers have presented a great case, and it seems like they have it all figured out, and our town peer review, who we hired, has agreed with their findings, and I think everyone at the table, and, you know, McIntyre's done a great job with listening to the public's concerns, and they've presented and made changes to their plan to accommodate those concerns, so...
I think most of the conditions that will apply to the earth removal permit?
Yeah.
And the site plan review, so it's going to be one decision.
Yeah, it's like one decision, but it's all, yeah, all comments under one...
Right, we should vote on the three separately.
Okay.
Voting on the use first.
Okay, so if you can give us a language, Mr. Benoit, for...
Sure, looking to make a motion to approve... Sure, looking to make a motion to approve special permit, section 9.3, for the outdoor manufacturing use in the industrial zone for MAP 165, lot 27 and 30, MAP 166, lot 15, for McIntyre.
I don't even care to make that motion. Mr. Benoit, can you, can you rephrase what you're looking for?
Sure, looking for a motion to approve the use. This is for the special permit, just for the use, for the outdoor manufacturing in the industrial zone for McIntyre loam property at MAP 165, lot 27 and 30, and MAP 166, lot 15.
We're going to approve all this without going over other conditions and terms and all that?
We'll do that with the earth removal. The earth removal permit.
Which is going to blanket cover all of it?
Yeah.
All right, as long as that's all known.
Well, the site plan.
That's why I want to make sure how this is going down here.
Yep, we'll do that as well. And we'll add, we could say this one with standard conditions.
So then it's all going to be covered under the one.
Yep.
Which covers all these here.
Yes.
Which we're voting on now.
Yes.
All right. So moved.
Does he have a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Zwicker, same by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
I abstain for closing, but not abstaining for this, so I said aye.
Okay. Really confusing. All right, so.
It's not really.
Any opposed? All right, so no opposition, no objection from Mr. Gannett.
So that's for the use. So for the earth removal permit, there's also a bunch of waivers?
So that there, I don't feel comfortable voting on tonight till I see it all in front of me written down. And all the conditions and everything can all be gone over.
Right.
I want to see it all in black and white. So everybody sees it and we all know what's going on, because that is going to be the deciding factor for all of it. And I'm not comfortable making any vote whatsoever on that tonight.
Okay. Well, the public hearing's closed, so we still have 90 days to render a decision.
We have two weeks is our next meeting, so we'll take it all.
We'll put a draft decision together, share that with the applicant.
Yep.
Okay.
Therefore, if you have?
We're all on the same page with hours and what's going on, the whole deal.
Okay.
That's the way it's going to go.
Okay, so the hearing's closed, we'll put it on as a decision item at the next agenda, which will be the decision and the vote.
Before, does anyone not agree with that approach, I should probably ask, or is that fair?
I'd rather see it all first.
Okay. Okay. Just put it out to the table to make sure we're all on the same page.
I should have a draft ready tomorrow for review.
Yep.
Yeah, and get it to them sooner and get any response, comments sooner and, you know, public hearing's closed, we'll, we'll get it all done.
And if I can, just being fair, that way that we see it. I don't like doing this without seeing you, the applicant. We all see what we're looking at and we're all agreeing on the same thing.
We should discuss what those conditions are before we put them on the draft. And we should vote on the waivers at this time. So one of the waivers was for section 6.1.6.1. It's a bond requirement. What we were discussing instead was posting a bond. Is that the amount?
Yeah, so that's the ancillary.
Right, right. For, for the, this isn't, this is to, this is to cover the stabilization of the slopes, stormwater basin, the drainage wells, 2.35 acres, the amount of 23,500. This is kind of a partial bond as opposed to the restoration plan and all that stuff that comes with. Any issues with that waiver?
Nope.
So.
No issue.
We'll take them all at once if you'd like. The next waiver, that one doesn't apply because that was a property line. Sorry. No excavation made less than 10 feet annual high water table. The engineering, graves and engineering revised to a five and a half foot offset groundwater table that was, that was agreed on by this board.
Yep.
Next waiver, 6.1.6.7, topsoil, subsoil stripped, the operations will be stockpiled, seeded, and used in the restoration area. This is still applicable because there's no restoration area for this site, just on the slopes and, and the, well.
And that's bonded.
Right, those will be bonded. Right. The next waiver, section 6.1.6.9. This may be not applicable as this one is really for the total of approximately 11 acres, because the overall disturbance, the overall area disturbance exceeds 10 acres, the active operation area is less than 10 acres, because it includes stormwater basin and stuff like that. It's one that we could vote on and grant, even though it may not be applicable, there's no issue with that. The next one's section 6.1.6.10 to section 13, trucking routes, measures applied, chief of police regards there too, access roads leading the public way, access roads constructed at an angle, and standard mass accepted road signs. All of those things are applied with the original permit, so these, these aren't applicable to this site. Section 6.1.7.1, it's a restoration plan, and this one is a, to be a permanent home for McIntyre loam, so there's not going to be a restoration here. In section 6.1.7.4, retained subsoil, topsoil spread over disturbed area. This, again, this is a relief from the restoration requirement as well. So is there any issues with any of the waivers that I just read?
I have no issue with the waivers.
Board can take a motion to grant the waivers as, as I just read to the man.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made to grant the waivers by Mrs. Zwicker, same by Mr. Schlesman. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Passes.
Want to talk about some of the special conditions. One of the ones I wrote down per the sound study said the blasting to adhere to 527 CMR 13 requirements, or state, you could say state, federal requirements for blasting, could add that as a condition. Think they have to do it anyway, but if we put it in writing, that's, I think that's okay. Noise to be in compliance with mass DEP noise policy, that's a standard special condition that we add to most of our permits. Post-construction sound study to take place within 90 days of completed construction. With the, the Pine project on Cliff Street, we had them post a bond for sound attenuation for post-construction sound study, in the amount of 20,000. I don't know if that would be, that'd be okay with the applicant for a sound study? If there's any sort of mitigation that needs to be made at that point, or as a result of the sound study, 20K seems reasonable?
It's good.
Okay, okay. We did that for Cliff Street, so should we do the same thing? Those are the only special, oh, and the construction hours. We could talk about that. I think I had.
Excuse me through the chair, which is different than the operating hours.
Right. The construction hours that we're talking about are, sorry, getting these a little mixed up. We talked about Saturday being reduced from, to eight to three, and the, the hammer and drilling not to start until 8:00 AM during the week?
Yeah.
Any issues with that?
Yep. We had that in one of our other projects also. They'll start not till 8:00 o'clock.
Regular construction could begin at 7:00, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, and hammer and drilling at 8:00. And stop, no, I think it was, went till 6:00, I believe.
What about blasting? Excuse me, through the chair, did we talk about blasting?
Yep, I see that.
What is it, what did you say?
So you're going 7:00 to 5:00 during the week?
Hours, 7:00 to 5:00 during the week, 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays.
Is that what you had?
For construction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but blasting, blasting is part of the construction.
Yes.
Right? What are the hours on that?
You could fit those in with the?
When you can't, when you have to notify, it would be certain notification to the butters.
Yeah, they have to adhere to the 527 CMR 13.
And you wouldn't be blasting unless you were drilling anyways, so the drilling would start at 8:00, if that's correct, am I right?
A lot of times they'll, they'll drill the holes and stop the holes day after or whatever. Sometimes later on that day, I've seen them stopping.
No, we just talked about the drilling, for the holes.
Yeah, and the blasting, though.
They usually work hand in hand.
Hand in hand, which would be after 8:00.
Drill for a day, then blast.
Just trying to get clarity.
That's right. Typically, the drill happens, they'll stop the holes, prepare for a blast the next day.
Yep.
The blasts cannot be, can't happen without town and Douglas in attendance. I don't, can't speak with any certainty, but they didn't, they didn't have a blast really early. I think the days that we did two a day, it was mid-morning, mid-afternoon. And I certainly let them know that they can't blast before eight, but I don't think they ever did.
Well, that's good, what you're saying.
Right.
You know, just have some clarity, minimums.
Absolutely.
Hammer and drill and blasting before 8:00, but continue to be a good neighborhood.
Yeah, you can start up, but.
Okay, okay, those are the only recommended special conditions I heard tonight. In addition over regular standard conditions.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, you passed the standard. That's why I want to see what is going to be considered standard.
Sure. Share with the applicant in advance, just to make sure that they're okay with it.
Yep.
Before it comes to the board, so.
Through the chair, do we have to address the gentleman's pre-blast survey?
I don't think we can govern that as part of this permit. That'd be something that they have to work out together.
Okay.
So, I think that's a separate.
Yeah, because that's like a civil property thing.
Right.
Okay, so, we're not going to continue the public hearing, but we will have it on the agenda for?
Yep, the hearing's closed.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it'll be on for the decision.
Okay.
Decision and votes.
Decision and votes for next meeting, which is? Do I, do I need to write that down, or you'll be able to?
You can put it on there.
Okay.
September 25th? Huh?
Yep, yep.
I'm going to do them all on this one decision. I think that's the best way to do it. This way we cover everything.
For being on the board?
I know nothing about it. Makes the most sense. It's what I've been doing.
We have a class on the 25th?
It's less paperwork.
We're going to, we're going to talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to go through everything. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
25th.
I see Mr. Morehouse is here, so ongoing development, BW Solar, Oak Street.
I recuse myself.
It's on under, ongoing. Do you have anything, Mr. Benoit? Okay.
Oh, I thought we were going to talk about the noise.
No, we can, if you'd like.
All right, give me, give an update on what's going on at the site.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, so Greg Morehouse, local renewable project manager, wanted to apologize to Mr. Zwicker personally. I'm sorry for what happened the other weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, seven, seven ten in the morning, it wasn't too good.
Yep, so we had miscommunication with our developer who didn't tell us the proper hours. We have rectified that, and now we have 15 posts left to install at this point, so.
How many?
Fifteen.
Out of how many did you do?
1,300.
Holy, yeah, all right.
So, we'll be, we need one more rock drill to come in, should be there Friday, so we should be wrapped up this week.
Excuse me, is this for racking?
So it's the support for the racking.
For the racking?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Except early, right?
Very early.
You guys do your second well yet?
Um, no, I don't believe they did. That one's really closely arrayed, so we're going to wait till after construction.
Okay, okay. How's the site holding up throughout the summer in general?
We got to do another round of seeding here, doing the post-installation, kind of tore up a lot of the grass, so we're doing that, but no incidents, all the basins are fully constructed and working pretty well so far.
Okay, it has been much rain, yeah.
No rain, no, right, right.
No rain, so they're working great.
Yeah, they are working very well right now.
Yep, everything's pretty much built and ready to go on the civil end, so just.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got about a month and a half left and we should be out of everything there.
Awesome. You guys be submitting a NASB build at that time?
Yes, we will.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And we'll have that peer reviewed and then you guys probably be all set.
Excellent.
When are you looking to have the arrays up?
Um, so the racking's actually starting this week. Modules are coming next week, so probably mid-October, we'll have all the panels up and just be wiring at that point.
Okay. Are all the poles from National Grid, everything lined up, ready to go to make connections?
Yep, all that stuff, just ready, waiting for them to give us a green light and obviously get modules installed.
All right.
Yep, then we got all our pads done, all the major equipment set, so moving quick after we got moving.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Anything else, Greg?
I don't know, that's it. Again, I really just want to apologize to Mr. Zwicker for what happened on site the other weekend.
All right. Mr. Benoit, any, any other updates for them?
No, no, that's, that's good. Glad you came in, thank you.
All right, no problem.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Mike's not back in. Greg?
Yes.
Just tell Mike we're, we're done with Oak Street, all right, if you don't mind.
They're back. Again, they are, really. And that rig is live. No problem.
All right. General bylaws, scenic road amendments for additional business, little discussion for the board to have.
Yep, so I put a placeholder on for town meeting for this. I don't have any proposed modifications at this point, and I'm not sure really where we want to put this, but, and how we want to word it, but I know we want to give the tree warden the authority to make a determination without having to come for this. And I just didn't know how you wanted that to read and where you wanted to put it.
And also on that aspect to the chair, it's a waste of town time and resources. All that notifications, letters, the town has to do it right on.
Money.
And it's, it's going to get cut down, or it's going to fall down. And I'd rather see it cut down before it kills somebody.
Yeah, and I'd rather see the money go towards me planting a tree and.
Correct.
Doing something.
So, verbiage needs to be put in there. I would think somehow whether warden has the right, if he deems fit, of an unsafe tree circumstance, just to remove it without having to waste resources. In the right of way.
Still don't know where to put it.
Could be maybe just like, uh, subsections, how far does this right criteria, notification of a designated road. Where does it talk about hearings?
How about under, when he put in liability, right in the beginning, tree warden deems it unsafe and unfit with his chance of liability?
It could go right under filing, just a subsection under filing.
It says under filing, oh, sorry, through the chair for me. It says, if they're going to do anything with cutting or removal of trees, it is a filing. We want to eliminate that, right?
Well, no, because.
You say it may not be a filing.
If you're on a scenic road and you want to open up a driveway and you need to remove trees, you need to file.
Because it could be healthy trees, right?
Like I did.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
I had to file because I was on a scenic road.
Yeah.
You don't want to eliminate that.
And then put an exception.
Unless.
Unless.
They're deemed.
The tree warden has to make that determination.
Yeah, unless the tree warden deems that the tree is a hazard.
Unsafe hazard, yeah.
And then the filing.
I think the filing has to, has to be for most people, but in the event that there is, the tree warden has the authority to make a determination in trees in the right of way to remove them without going through the filing process.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
But it seems as though we would put that in the filing procedure.
As an exception?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need to do a filing only for this, one special case.
Right.
So maybe we put it right under filing and make that a number two, move the next numbers down, and just do tree warden, dangerous trees in the opinion of the tree warden may be removed without filing for this permit.
At the disposition of the tree warden.
Yeah. Dangerous trees in the opinion of the tree warden.
Without filing, yes.
Can we not call it dangerous? Because what if they're like diseased, or, I mean, I'm just trying to think of different scenarios. If you could just give him the authority to make a determination based upon his job?
Maybe Adam could give a language.
He deems fit, or deems the need of removal.
Yeah.
Instead of putting it specific, he deems it.
Yeah.
Whether it's because of rock, whether because it's dying.
Yeah.
Unhealthy. Unhealthy, unhealthy or dangerous trees.
It's all could be.
Yeah, in his professional opinion.
Yeah.
Any tree deemed unsafe or unfit.
But Adam might be able to come up with that language.
Right.
Because he knows what he has to come for, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And would we want to make sure that there's notification of the affected homeowner?
It's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant.
It's in the right of way. Homeowner doesn't really have a say. It's all in the right of way.
Well, does it, what about National Grid or any kind of power line?
They can just cut no matter what. They don't have to do anything.
How about this?
Because they right away use the power lines.
Item two, we'd read tree warden and say unhealthy or dangerous trees within the right of way, in the opinion of the tree warden, may be removed by the town without filing an application hereunder.
There you go.
And it's, we don't need to run that by Adam and.
I gotta run it by council no matter what, so.
Just see if Adam likes that language.
Yep.
Okay, it's a good spot for it.
Works.
Okay.
Good. All right. When do we have to have stuff for fall town meeting done by?
You mean bylaws?
Yeah.
We'd have to hold a public hearing before the meeting at some point, so we have to advertise for it. The only one that is zoning bylaw that's going on is the ADU one, and right now that's bouncing around with council. We'll probably have it for a draft review at our next meeting, but it's not going to be the public hearing yet. That'll probably be in late October, but we're going to be on the warrant.
Okay.
No matter what, for a placeholder.
Okay.
And we hold our public hearing, so long as it's before town meeting, we're okay.
Okay.
Could this go on with it?
Yeah, this doesn't need, this doesn't need a public hearing because it's a general bylaw, but the select board could put it on the warrant. I already have a placeholder for it.
Okay. We'll jump with Adam, town council real quick.
Yep.
And shoot it right over to the board of selectmen.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Tom?
You guys going to talk about the trees that KTKT?
Um.
Is that across cubes?
Let me just make sure it's.
Beautiful.
The cubes, okay, yeah, ongoing development cubes at Gilboa.
Did I just, real quick on that?
Yeah.
Sorry, make it take out of order, but.
No, that, that was the next thing there.
You're going to need some water, though.
Yeah, they're going to need to figure that out.
What's happening, Tom?
Tom McIntyre, manager of KTKT, I just, I think I signed, at the last meeting, I was caught a little off guard. I signed the plan and it was done.
Yep.
They've obviously done the work, but part of it is I just wanted the board to approve the signed plan. I don't know if that was ever formally done, or if this is a form or it could be done.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of, I bounced it around to the chair, and we considered that the board was pretty much unanimous with the dissent.
Yeah.
We're just kind of waiting for you to sign off on it.
That's, that's fine.
But if we want us to take a formal vote, I don't, I don't see an issue with that if you'd like.
Sure.
It's kudos. Looks great, yeah.
Yeah, it turned out nice. I just, the history, I just wanted things done procedurally correct.
Need a vote for the approval of the amended plan for the planting of the trees at Gilboa?
There you go.
What's in place?
Uh, Northeast Maine.
Huh?
Said Northeast Maine.
Well, okay.
Is that your move?
Yes.
That's his motion.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead. Motion, can you just confirm what the motion, just the vote is, just, I was kind of confused with.
To approve the amended plan signed by Mr. McIntyre in between our last meeting.
Okay, all right. Motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, second by Mr. Salkar, I think.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Cool. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Benoit, what do we got for other ongoing developments? Anything to talk about?
We've got a, we kind of, I already talked about the legacy circle piece. Oh, we should have a road acceptance coming in for Sleepy Hollow at some point soon.
Please, remind me, Sleepy Hollow, is that Joseph?
Yeah, Joseph Road.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they put a draft ASBIL plan together. We're having it peer reviewed. Once that peer review's done, it'll come to this board, and we'll get a chance to recommend it to the select board.
For spring?
Yes.
Has to be spring?
Yep. Yep, they just need to submit, they need the minutes from our meeting to submit with their package to the select board. So, it'll probably be on our next agenda.
Okay.
I think they're meeting on site Friday, so.
The whole development or just one, the whole development?
Yeah, the road and all the stone water infrastructure, yeah.
That's good news.
All right. Sutton Douglas Development?
Yeah.
An update on that. The land was officially transferred to the town.
Ooh.
That's a huge, huge bit that a lot of the butters were asking about to make sure that that got done first.
Yeah.
They finally got that accomplished. It took a little while, but they got it done.
That's good.
So, that land's officially in the town's possession. It should hit our assessor's records in January, so, but that's officially ours now.
Any word on movement with that project?
They're going to be starting, I don't know, but they're working on setting up their pre-construction meeting with us. That's their first step. They have five years, according to their covenant, to complete the roads. They'll probably ask for an extension at some point. It's been two years already.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I know.
But, yeah, so.
Because that's going to be starting off in Sutton.
Yep.
Going into the wall.
Yep. So, that's that, and then we have a decision.
How's Whiting's reservoir? They clean any of that stuff up?
Yeah, yeah, they did all the work. At least, I don't know if they're finished yet. They're supposed to be reporting back to us so our consultant can go look at it.
Okay.
Because they want that also probably for spring.
They do, yeah. But our, and that one's already been peer reviewed, so that would come to us hopefully at the next meeting as well. You know, that's a good point. I'll follow up with them.
Because that needed some real cleanup work.
Sure did.
Huge.
Yep.
Because there was a small punch list, I know.
Yep, there was. You had to put in the access road through the back and all the things.
All that kind of stuff?
Yep, so we can maintain the basins.
Okay. As long as the punch list has been good.
Yep.
See what peer review says.
Yep. Yeah, peer review identified the items that they needed to do, then they started working on those things. I still don't know if they've finished it yet. They're supposed to let me know.
Yeah, because their attention bars had to get all dug out.
Oh, yeah.
They need to do, or.
Yep, and they had a lot of that they needed to do.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
Oh, so we have a training next meeting, starts at 5:00 PM. This is one of our citizens' planners' training collaboratives that we got a budget for at spring town meeting. We asked for five trainings. This is the first of hopefully five this year. This one is on rules and responsibilities of the planning boards, planning and zoning boards, so the zoning board's also invited to this. This will be at 5:00 next Wednesday, right before our meeting. There will be a representative here giving a presentation, so.
Before?
Here, for our next meeting. It's five.
Uh, planning board meeting, not master plan meeting.
Right, yeah. We have 5:00 right before this.
On the 25th, 5:00.
The 25th, yep.
Are we here?
Yep.
We're getting our own sandwiches. They providing box lunch. What's happening? Seriously, if we're not eating, so.
Oh.
We'll fade at eight.
Maybe we'll.
Do something, have something over there.
Mike just said he's going to get us pizza.
We have a budget. This town's got some money now.
So.
We've got a lot of development, and we support all that, so.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
We can come up with something, maybe, Matt?
Yep.
All right, yeah. I went through a lot of those trainings on my own, what the town paid for. They're all online. They're very informative if you've not gone through them. You know, any new members, Jake, you can learn a lot from going through those and really understanding what responsibilities and roles and what, really what you do. So, it's very helpful.
And then our next training is the next meeting, also the Wednesday, 5:00 prior. That one is going over A and Rs and subdivision control.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that one will be pretty good.
So, that'll be.
October 9th.
Two weeks we have one, and then two weeks after that.
Yes, yes.
Just make sure, Jen reminds us.
Oh, yeah.
In our email with the agenda.
Oh, yeah, she will, so will I, yeah.
All right. So, the chair, are you going to teach the classes? Or you already did it?
Quick question. Have you heard from Ernie?
Nothing.
You know, I have not reached out to Ernie. I need to do that.
I've reached out multiple times, nothing.
Zero.
He was out about.
Yeah.
I saw him the other day.
Yeah.
Did you?
That's right.
I didn't get an opportunity to speak with him.
That's good. Where'd you see him wrapping up?
He was.
All right, Mr. Benoit, any other stuff?
Yep.
We got some minutes.
We have a decision.
Okay.
Which is for pine, sand, and stone, which is for their, sorry, it's for the 286 Webster Street outdoor storage. This was vetted by the applicant, and they agreed with all the language on here, which is needed to sign it. We've already voted on this. This includes the construction hours that we just kind of used as a template for the other item, 7:00 AM to 5:00, put in the holidays, all that stuff, and 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturday, construction of this project. So, so.
So, just need signatures.
Yep.
Can I request going through the chair that we go over what our boilerplate is to revise it and amend it if needed?
Yeah, so.
So, we have, so we all know what, when we say boilerplate, what is, anybody really know what a boilerplate is?
So, one thing I did at my previous town is I had all our standard conditions laminated and available for all the members to read, and then we would pick numbers of which ones we wanted to add to each decision. If that's something you're interested in, I'd happily do that.
You can edit out a boilerplate. It's, it's your master spec kind of thing.
Right, but the idea is, is we should have one, and then if somebody comes in front of us, they can ask for a waiver on an item in that boilerplate if need be. And thank goodness, back when, years ago, we had something in a boilerplate on the rock drilling and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Because of what went on. These are things that can get overlooked, you know, as time goes on, it's repetitive, and then all of a sudden, well, it used to be in it, well, it got taken out. Who took it out? I don't know. It's not there. We should all have what we know as a boilerplate.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, at least look at.
Yeah.
Check it out and amend it, change it, and then move forward. So, we have something standardized.
And give it a more formal title than boilerplate.
I call them.
We know what it is.
Master, standard conditions.
Planting board.
Planting board, standard conditions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, right now, our construction hours, I, I mean, I read them earlier. No construction Sundays or New Year's, Memorial Day, and Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, or Christmas. No construction may begin before 7:00 AM, continue past 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, before 8:00 AM nor past 1:00 PM on Saturdays unless approved in advance by the board. And then however, between November 15th and April 1st, equipment may be started at 6:30, but construction may not commence until 7:00.
So, you're talking about idling.
And I think somewhere in that area where any GC on any site must sign that.
Yeah.
Form of conditions.
So, they know.
And a copy of it signed is returned back to the planning board. So, that when something comes up, don't tell me you didn't know because you signed it. You should know.
Right, right, that's a good point.
Can it be part of the permit process?
Yeah, a copy of this must be.
GCs have no clue what conditions are.
So, maybe have it as part of the permitting process.
I mean, that's kind of negligence by the applicant not to provide it by their GC.
But I'm just saying, it's happening.
Yep.
It's going on. So, they just play, well, I don't know. What do you mean you don't know? You're on the job site.
Yeah.
So, things are getting pushed around. I don't think it should be happening.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it shouldn't be happening, not at all.
So, we had it through the chair. We had an encounter over in Southeast Maine with neighbors and drivers of equipment, and the answer by, when they confronted, I was there, the GC, he says, well, everyone speeds on the street, so that's why our trucks just go that speed. They should acknowledge the speed limits. I don't, you don't have to put it in writing, but it's just silly.
Yeah.
That they would think they can do 50 and on a 30 because everyone else is. Doesn't make it right.
No. I think the decision was in there. I think everyone already signed it, possibly.
Yeah, we'll go through it again.
Great. So, and then we just have minutes.
Okay.
Anyone read the minutes? We still have time?
I went through August 14th and did not see any issues at all.
We still have some June stuff?
Yep.
Pending?
Yeah, I may have looked at one either June or July, but I don't recall. But I know August 14th.
August 14th.
Typos.
Were you able to go through them at all, Mr. Benoit?
No, but we definitely have time to do it now, so it's no problem.
Yeah. All right, let's, just timeline order. June 12th, we'll just go through and look at that one.
Ooh, I was in here. there at Sleepy Hollow, they were going to go to the highway department. They were talking about a solar light. We weren't sure what was going to work best. Any outcome? I'm reading it right now. I'm reading it right now.
You know, I didn't, I don't, I don't know. That's a good question.
Because that was part of the project.
Right.
Be nice to know what was finally decided because we said if it works out, it should be a light that maybe we incorporate in further projects so that.
I suggest, yeah.
So you have 40 different lights.
True. Okay.
Thank you.
They don't have lights in Douglas.
Drop it.
Matt, under number five, under additional businesses, the community impact grant or compact grant?
Community compact.
It is?
Yep.
I don't remember that being that.
What's compact?
I don't know why it's called that. That's what it is.
I don't see anything in the 12th.
I don't either. No, I don't either. All right. Anyone care to make a motion to accept the June 12th, 2024 meeting minutes?
I will make the motion to accept the June 12th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Made by Mr. DeRose.
June 12th. June 12th, 2024. It's July.
Who's going to second it?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schlesman. Any further discussion?
Just.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no one's all set, Matt?
Yep.
All right, and just go over July 17th.
Right on the top says, Meg Schlesman recused. Should we have a D at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, there's a Hawk Hill Orchard.
There should be.
You know that, right?
There should be an item right in between. Motion to release the two lots from Hawk Hill that says that Ms. Schlesman has returned to the meeting. Should be an item there.
Yeah.
Were you on Zoom that day, Meg? Was that a Zoom day?
No.
No, I was here.
That's when Jude was on Zoom.
Yep.
Yeah, from July.
Right.
Exactly.
The, on the top of the second page, it happens to have my name there, says, second line, damn road as presented by Aaron Socrate. I don't know, as presented made by Aaron Socrate.
Yeah.
Just the made goes away, I think.
Did you pick that up, Matt?
Say that one again? Sorry.
Aaron, I was reading.
Yeah, second line, second, second down on page two. It just says, Blackstone Valley Logistics, Lack of the Maroon, as presented, probably should be by Aaron Socrate, not presented made by Aaron Socrate. Give it to the made.
Motion to endorse minor modifications.
Yeah.
As presented.
You made a motion to endorse.
No, that's, yeah, that's good. Yeah.
We could say was presented by, presented.
No, you didn't present it. So you made the motion.
Yeah.
As presented. Made by Mr. Socrate, yeah.
Six one half dozen. If we, you know, if you change, read it a different way, it could be Aaron Socrate made a motion to endorse minor modifications as presented by Richard.
I mean, we're just splitting hairs.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's fine. It doesn't, I don't think it says you did anything. You didn't.
Mm-hmm.
Three cores away down. Mr. Betancourt will come back with, it should probably be.
Yep.
With.
Yep.
Hit the simple one.
Go ahead.
So, here we are on July 17th and Legacy Circle, they have hired someone to do the work of putting the trees up. We're now in September.
The third line from the bottom, town council for the stated that they, maybe, does for the come out? Town council stated that they should go through the process.
Yeah, give it a for the. Page three, the second item, motion to endorse, this is motion to approve. You endorse A and Rs, you approve applications.
That could have been, I could have said that.
It's okay.
If you really wanted to get picky on the one right before that, the vote passed unanimously?
Oh.
Or was it, it was one vote, right?
Yeah, it's one vote.
Can I ask two point of order questions?
Sure.
When we were talking about the blasting schedule, if the town has to be there, then they wouldn't be doing it, doing it on a Saturday anyway, correct? Right, so we don't have to worry about.
Well, it's a town, as in like the fire department detail, like they could hire someone Saturday, but.
Okay. I was just wondering if that might help, you know?
What's that? We, we put in no blasting, no drilling, no hammering on Saturdays.
Saturdays. We said only weekdays on that.
Weekdays, okay.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't do it on a Saturday anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, I knew the time. And then when we're looking at these A and Rs, do all of the owners need to be labeled on the plan?
On plans, yes. Their booking page sometimes references.
Because I was noting on the one that came across for Mr. Fitzpatrick, that parcel A doesn't have an owner listed and Lot 1R does not have an owner listed either.
Yeah, how can we, can't go by that now?
Lot owner is the applicant, he's the owner of record. And parcel A is to be transferred to the owner of record.
Okay.
So.
Are they usually, I just, I don't think I've ever seen it where they haven't been labeled before.
I mean, it's, it's labeled, it's just on the lower part of the plan, the owner's of record.
Labeled a different way.
Ah, okay, got it.
All right, so July 17th, I want the team to motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended. So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Socrate, second by Ms. Schlesman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a tie.
Okay. And Mr. Rose, you looked at August 14th over?
I did.
You did thoroughly.
Which one? And I'm checking it again.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
No.
August 14th.
What, ZBA applications on our agenda?
Oh. It's a new thing.
Yeah, I, I remember I had suggested a couple minor fixes and they got put in.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
She said they'd get put in before the meeting. Look at the hours and minutes of these things. Three hours, 16 minutes long.
Under 15, just ZBA applications, research need, just needed for planning board review.
Needed. Oh, there's one. On number four, Sue Perkins, member of the Open States Committee, CPA Subcommittee, discussed